So, in the context of a motion to modify the budget, I believe that the Finance Director could speak to that and answer that question because I think it's a very important question and it has to be answered so that people know the effect of what they're voting on. Thank you for making that point. Mr. Pine?
Thank you. Following the budget that was mailed to us and looking at the first number of line items and in an effort to get to that 10% threshold to get us out of there reasonably loud, I'm going to make a motion that we move the Board of Selectmen budget to zero.
That's not a... That motion is not in order. We cannot just make a blanket motion to make it go to zero. The Charter is specific. We have to go by the lines.
As I say, the first line is the Board of Selectmen line item in the budget that was mailed to us. So I'm just picking the first line item in this document and I'm making a motion that we change that amount to zero. Hold on. Let me get that one. Okay, man, what?
Chuck?
Yeah?
You're talking about a department?
Yeah.
So, I think...
What has to happen at this meeting is you're...
Hold on, hold on. Timeout, timeout, timeout.
Is this not the line items we're talking about?
No.
It's...
Oh.
The question that you raised, I think...
All the line items.
The question that you raised, Chuck, is a legal question and I'm going to have the town attorney address the legal question.
Can't wait. Okay, oh, so if... Is this the page 49 of the budget? Is that the right line item? Forgive me, I withdraw the motion and I'll straighten myself out immediately. Okay. I move that the First Selectmen budget be changed to zero. Is that better?
No, you've got to change line items. Change the line items. Line item... You're saying you want to take the First Selectmen down to zero?
I'm sorry, it looks like line item 50100. Is that the line item?
First Selectmen.
Okay. All right, so try it again, start from the top. I move that line item 50100 labeled First Selectmen be reduced to zero.
I second the motion. Okay, the motion has been seconded. Now I'd like to just tell the audience that the way that Mr. Pine just made that motion is perfect. He cited the line, he gave the number of the line. That's the proper way in which to make a motion. The motion has been seconded. Now I'd like to hear argument on this, please. Does anybody want to speak on behalf of the motion? The motion that is before us is with regard to line item 111... I'm sorry. 50100. That that line item be reduced to zero. That's page 49 of our booklet. What we're dealing with in line item 50100 is the salary of the First Selectmen. The vote has been called. Is there a second? All those in favor for calling the vote, say aye. Okay, the ayes have it. All right, we're going to do a count, see how many people there are here in the audience. We have the registrars please address the count.
I need to do a count. That was a very combative way to start.
That is not a very nice idea. Right, you're doing this very...
It was risky too because some people might be favor most things you don't want.
No, they're not a people that you can...
Well, they're not letting you do it.
But that one to start was bad.
Twenty-one people died on the left. You no longer have a...
Ladies and gentlemen, please beat your seats and hold up your piece of paper so you can be counted and the registrars will be coming around to count. Thank you. Voters must be inside the building with their piece of paper.
Oh, Charlotte, do you need to go to the bathroom? Do you need to go to the bathroom? Do you want me to take you? Are you sure? Okay.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the count is 275. I would need 165 to approve the motion. I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your blue cards and we're going to count. The motion is to change line 50100 First Selectmen to zero. That's the salary of the First Selectmen. Count.
So if you want to vote, you've got to raise your card up. So I assume you guys are ready, right?
Nothing about this process is efficient. Only 187 pages.
Stop it. I'm not going to go. There's 275.
Yeah, would you say that? No, it's okay. You said you'd give me a... You're going to move up to 10% and have them retract the figure. 10% of the line item. I don't know how many more people. It's okay if you need to make a break. Yeah, yeah, I know. Plus, it gives me...
We need 165. Ladies and gentlemen, the vote was 157 for. That is shy of the 165 needed. Not approved. I will entertain another motion. Does anybody have a motion to be made regarding 50101? Does anybody have a motion?
Um, I have two motions. Can I do two at the same time?
No, one motion.
Okay. Um, there's a... There's a large contingent to the Finance Budget, 56800. Contingency 175,000. Page number 71. Line item 56... 800. Contingency to the Finance Budget of 175,000.
All right, what is your motion? Is it to reduce or to approve?
No, it may be one who understand what that is but to just take it out because it was your move, so why would we have to approve it?
No, that motion is not in order. You need to make a motion and talk for the court.
I would leave the motion to zero it out, please. Do you have a guy to...
A motion has been made with regard to line item 56800 on page 71 to zero out the contingency. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye, all right. That motion will now be debated. Does anybody want to speak on behalf of the motion?
I would like to speak, Mr. Moderator. I'm Chairman of the Woodbridge Board of Finance and if you know what contingency is, what you're doing is you're taking away money that is there in case there's an emergency. If a department has an emergency and cannot fund it, we use contingency to pay for it. By eliminating contingency, there will be no money for any emergency that might arise in the town. 150,000, 150,000 by the way, is a very low figure for the size of the budget we have. $51 million, 150,000 is very, very insignificant. Um, and in fact, it will basically cause any department with a problem to not get that problem fixed. So things won't be replaced, things won't be fixed and we will, uh, basically, uh, move on.
Anybody else want to speak for or against that motion?
Uh, I'd like to speak in context of that motion and the voting. Uh, I questioned just the count, um, so I would like to make a motion...
We can't have two motions.
All right. Then I would like to make a statement and question the authenticity of that last count. I feel that people may have gotten confused. I don't know if they actually stand up and then as they're counting and pointed to, they could sit down and the number could be read aloud instead of individuals just counting in this place.
Okay, that's a fair enough point. So, let's vote, let's do this, since we're working on this motion now, let's finish this motion. We'll come back to the other one. We'll count the, uh, those that were in favor and then we'll count those that were against. So we'll get a complete count.
Based on the information provided, I will retract my contingency challenge that's based on this information.
So you are removing your motion?
Well, because there's no details, it's very difficult, obviously. So, yes, based on what was provided, unless there's any other... And that someone else would like to have it. It seems like a necessary thing. I run a company, I understand it. So I will retract that one. I have enough others.
So if you're withdrawing your motion, I think we should have a determination of a voice vote whether or not people would approve your withdrawal or disapprove of the withdrawal. Can I have a show of hands as to who would agree to withdraw that motion? It appears pretty evenly divided. I'm not sure that we have a clear majority to withdraw that motion.
Was there a second to her motion? I don't believe anybody's seconded.
There was a second to her motion. Yeah, the motion is... The motion has been brought forward, so unless there's a clear majority agreeing to withdraw it, I think we're going to have to hold a vote on that motion.
How are we holding that vote? Can we modify how we do it because I'm questioning...
No. The motion has been made, it's been seconded, it's on the floor.
Okay, so if you call for a vote and no one raises their hand, it's a dead issue. So we can expedite that?
Correct.
Okay.
So, the motion that's on the floor is the contingency fund on the Board of Finance, item number 56800 be reduced to zero. All those in favor of the motion being approved, please raise your card and stand. Okay. I can see visually that it's very, very few and if there's no... Nobody in disagreement, I am going to rule that that motion was disapproved. And now we're going to go back to the first motion. And the first motion was, um, with regard to line item 50100 to reduce the First Selectmen salary to zero. And we're going to do a count. All those in favor, please stand, raise your card and be counted. And then once that's done, I'll count all the names.
So then we sit down?
Just to be clear, this is on the first motion that was given for 50100 to be reduced to $0, correct?
We got it in my chair. I cannot believe you forgot to... I reminded myself 15 times.
Are you enjoying democracy at its finest? This is what it's all about.
Promise them a big dessert. You guys get a big dessert.
I'm going to stand until they tell me to sit.
I mean, how much longer do you think it'll be?
2022.
I mean, did you count? I don't know. Did you count? I don't know. I didn't count.
I counted up the gray sweater.
Why don't we just go one, two, three?
All right, now we got to count the names. Please, those who are named, please raise your card and be standing, stand and be counted.
No one is... They're inside when you vote. That's why we're taking the names and we'll add them and we'll have them here to vote. It's based on votes counted, not number of people.
I thought we had to be inside and seated to be counted. So these individuals just walk in from outside?
Well, if they go outside, they won't be counted.
But they are.
They all just walk in?
Look, I'm not going to babysit townspeople and voters. Either they're going to be here and be counted or they're going to be outside and not be counted.
I do have a... When is the charter revised? Is that every 10 years, 15 years? When is the next charter revision?
I'll have to leave that for the county attorney.
That is very interesting, guys. What is it, 275?
Well, no, but now they're not doing... They're just preparing the actual votes that are counted. They're just forgetting about the... Total number. They don't have the total number. They just take the yeses and they think they know what to prepare.
Well, what were the yeses?
To get the total.
Did they not say that people needed to go inside to be counted? So when they all said, they know there are limits. So that is the law from the beginning. Why do we change the rules to set the... That is... That should not be... That is... That is not what the law... Cannot be called because you're a gentleman. They all walked over.
Okay, on that last vote count, there were only 225 voters who voted. We didn't have the requisite 250. That motion does not carry. How many yeses? Doesn't matter. Does anybody have another motion? I'm entertaining motions on each line item. Does anybody have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the rest of the meeting that all votes are counted and delivered to the body of this meeting, just for record.
I have the vote count. Is that what you want? Oh. Okay, so in favor of that was 150, against it was 75. We're at 225. Next motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion... I'd like to make a motion to have a better counting measure for when we take these votes.
I can only do what I can do here. I'm the moderator. I have people counting and doing the best... I should say the administration is doing the best and to count. I am the moderator, trying to moderate this meeting. It's obviously a very unusual way of passing a budget as this is what's called for in the Charter. We're going to do it the best we can and follow rules and best we can. The administration is going to do it the best it can.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion moving forward for every vote, the yeas move to one side of the room and the nays move to the other side.
I believe the next charter is for a second and then discussion.
There's no... We're taking motions now at this point to modify the budget. I second the motion.
Second on the floor, next to your discussion, per Robert's rule.
What is the purpose of this meeting? To have votes. It is whether you agree or disagree, it's that simple. People should be counted. This is all we're asking for. If every vote is voted down, that's fine. But let's do it in a fair process where you don't have two people going up and she's going, "Did you count those middle people? I didn't count those."
She's just talking about the inconsistency.
Let's just do it fairly. This way people go home. Nobody wants to be here till 11 o'clock at night.
Jeff. All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second to do the yeas and nays on each side. I just don't...
The only motions that I am entertaining are motions to modify the budget.
And where is that in the Charter? This is not... This doesn't say that we can't have a motion for the county. The county is voting right now.
I am the moderator and I'm trying to get through the question meeting. So I'm determining what's the scale of the questions are going to be and what we're going to proceed on regarding the motion. So we have to have a motion.
Hi, I'm a student named Lana Afarzon, 225, Amsonia Road. Question before I make my motion. Uh, line item 52100. Page 91. We are looking at $309,798. Before I make a motion, I do have a question. What is general professional services?
That is our contractual obligation for paying our ambulance service. That's something that we, if we come up with, it's what they charge us for ambulance service. That's what it is. Do you have a motion to require you to play?
Why do you make motions, so before I make a motion, I have a question? So, my question would be answered, that's fine, that's something we can... Hi again, rigid, but kind, hardy, a brace brook, that's one word, bro. A point of information before I make my motion. Buyback is a concept that's not been enforced currently in most contracts, and the idea of buying back sick days is an outdated principle. So with that in mind, I move that each one of the five zero seven zero zero, which is buyback sick, in each one of the individual budgets be eliminated and brought to zero.
What page does it want?
Start on page forty-nine and continuing with every line item. They're all five zero seven zero zero. There's buyback sick within Board of Selectment. There's buyback sick within public works. There's buyback sick within, and they're all, and they're all five zero seven zero zero. I wish to make all of those line items in each one of the budgets go from the current number it is now to zero.
So I don't, I see five oh seven zero zero, but I don't see anything else to talk about. Which other number?
They're all identified as five zero seven zero zero. So if you look at page forty-nine, you will see it's six or seven down, buyback sick. If you look on page fifty-three, under Town Court, you will see five zero seven zero zero in buyback sick.
If my major, if my major says something about that, buyback sick days are a non-union contract. They're a non-union, and we've violated the union's agreement if we do away with it. Can't do that. Some of the, some of the non-union ones are, but the union ones are not, it gets together.
I will amend my motion to identify five zero seven zero zero in non-union contracts. Anything that identifies buyback sick, go from whatever the current number is to zero.
I am not the moderator, but I believe you have to do them one by one.
I am certain that we have to do them one by one, right? I'm not even gonna close the question, we have to go line by line.
It's, it's a line item in each one of them, and per Robert's rules, you are allowed to take multiples if they're under the same general office. So per Robert's rules, I motion that five zero seven zero zero in non-union contracts go from the current number to zero.
I don't think it's a matter of Robert's rules, I think it's a legal question. I don't think I can start from the general term.
Is the camera still on? Nice. Where do I get to see my, my brand?
I don't know if it's possible. I, I understand the question, but I don't know if it's possible to get that information. That has to come from Tony, our finance director. It may not be possible to do. Tony, do you have that?
If you identify the line in the number, or then I can tell you if it's union or non-union.
Under budget one 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 zero dash zero zero, there is five zero seven zero zero. That is buyback sick for a total of eleven thousand, three hundred and two dollars. Can you identify if that is union or non-union?
It's gonna give me a little bit of time because there's both union and non-union in that number. It's for the whole department, so there is two union members and two non-union members in that department, so I have to...
We're gonna need to take a recess and study this question.
Why don't you just take them, go ahead and do it? This is not stopping any time soon. One vote. We're the only ones that can. We have a good excuse. What is cilantro? It's not free though. What is cilantro? I'm fine. I mean, that is an enviable position, I feel like, with Dylan getting food. Ask what? Isn't it what? It's gonna last like ten minutes, or over about ten minutes. Isn't it eight o'clock? Isn't it like eight o'clock? You think the vending machine can work for these girls? Vending machine's not gonna work for these people. We need dinner. It's not gonna be that different in twenty minutes. Huh? I mean, we can text, and I can update you on how things are going. I mean, we can text, and I can update you on how things are going. I'll start. I'll make motions and stuff. I'm looking for stuff to make motion. I'm gonna help strategize. I'm fine. I'm really fine. Alright, let me just see if I can find the other thing before I go. Huh? I thought too, I don't know why they're, I thought somebody here was gonna have a plan, I'm like, alright. There's no way this is gonna happen. We have to change the budget by ten percent. That's like five million dollars. One point five is gonna get the mill rate this year, and so all those cuts will happen. But this is a, with this plan, to just cut everything, redo. Start up, because right now people are struggling to find anything. It looks like nothing's gonna change.
Okay, I have the information? Yeah. The, um, non-union, the, uh, union, uh, buyback sick amount for five oh seven oh oh one in the Board of Selectment is two thousand nineteen dollars. The non-union amount is ninety-two eighty-three.
My point of information, I have requested that each one of the budgets with both the, the non-union as well as the union be identified.
That would take a little while longer, yeah. It would be a while.
I, I'm going to draw my motion.
Alright, motion move forward.
My name is Penny Wu, three combo burro. I'd like to make a motion, as a lot of people have said, to resume this at another time. To do this properly, because this has been dragged long. Lots of people couldn't make it to the night.
As the moderator, I'm gonna grant that to put up. The first selection has determined whether there's an emergency petition to reconvene this meeting. I don't have the authority to cancel a, uh, a town meeting. That would have to be done to the three point two of the charter. I don't have that authority. I'm tasked with continuing this meeting until I'm told differently by the Board of Selectment.
That, have I do, that we need a hundred and sixty-four votes to support a land to pass the budget?
Do you have a motion today?
To have a hundred and sixty-four votes to approve each land to pass the budget. Can we do that?
I don't understand the question.
Now, we only count the people who are against the budget. Can we count the people who approve the budget?
We have to proceed by motions, and we'll count the people that vote yea, and we'll count the people that vote nay. If there aren't two hundred and fifty people to vote, then it won't pass.
You've been waiting for four hours, so let's keep our life, let's keep our eating. You've talked too long.
Do you have a motion to make, sir? Set forward and make a motion.
My name is Daniel Callen, thirty-three West Wood Drive. And I would like to make a motion that the Board of Selectment is to pick up a new initiative at the next meeting, a revision to the charter process. Obviously, this process does not work for this town.
So I have a second to that motion. Unfortunately, the motion is not properly being part of us, because the only business... I'll draw my motion. Thank you.
Daniel Delbrecht, eleven Main and Main Drive. I would like to make a motion to petition the Board of Selectment to consider postponing this meeting till we can have a better voting system, because I question the authenticity of the vote so far on everything else.
That's for the Board of Selectment to decide. We're gonna pause the meeting and let them prefer. Alright, the, uh, the town attorney has advised me that we need to proceed and go forward. We do not have authority to continue this meeting. So, next motion.
I, I don't have a motion, but I would like just to follow through and say that I'm extremely disappointed in the way the original virtual meeting went on, and this disaster as well. And I hope, I hope that it resonates with the Board of Selectmen and the elected people in this town, that for what it costs to live here, we all deserve a lot better.
Alright, I'm tasked with having to continue this meeting until the Board of Selectment tells me otherwise. So, next motion.
Um, hi, my name is Steve Rowling. Uh, one two four, Seymour, Woodbridge. Here with me are having a few notes. So my first one is line item five two 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 six five eight eighty-seven. Five two 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 five. Page eighty-seven, five five two 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 five. Volunteer incentives for the fire department. I don't know what that means. I love that fire department, but I don't know what that word incentivizes. Volunteer department. They have a lovely place here, it'd be a lot worse, but I don't know what that means. So, I take a motion to, if you're a volunteer, you don't need an incentive.
The, the volunteer incentive program, as you know, we have an unpaid fire department.
Right, volunteer.
They volunteer.
Right, volunteer.
In order to encourage membership within the department, we have incentives. One is a bond program, and there's also another tax incentive program. And, uh, I've been doing this, I'm probably the longest-serving person here. I've been doing this for a long, long time, and the work that these guys put in. They are more than entitled to the incentives that we give them for going out into the freezing cold and into the horrible conditions they do. So that's what it is. It's an incentive to have these guys come out every, every time they need to come out, and also to hopefully encourage others to join.
Alright. Alright, well, if you guys can't see that, then what about line number page eighty-eight? Five five two four five, ninety-five thousand dollars for hydrants.
That is, again, that's nothing in your control. That is the water for hydrants, and it's built by the water company directly to that. We have no control over that. It's based on usage, and it's really, it's really not even a real number, but that's the way it works. The water company builds them, and that's where they have to pay.
And you have bills backing that it's worth ninety-five thousand dollars.
Of course.
Okay, fantastic. Page one oh three.
Chief, you want to address this?
I'm sorry, I was on human services. Yeah, I was addressed.
Okay.
Page one oh three, see what was on? The human services. I'm curious what line five eight two one two five, five eight two one two is.
I can answer that question. The, uh, town of Woodbridge has a youth services department, and the youth services provides program for youths aged around seventh grade. And, um, that's a subsidy that the town provides to the, uh, department for operations of the, uh, pro, for programming, and to pay the youth services director.
Alright, and there's back and forth with that?
Yeah, they have a budget, and they take a grant money from the state, and they charge user fees to the participants. So that's, that's the subsidy portion of it.
Perfect. Page one thirteen. Line five five three hundred.
The, uh, for the library, for, uh, books, uses the movies. The library director in consultation with the library commission uses that budget to update its collection.
And this is to subsidize from the Friends of Library?
Pardon?
This is to subsidize for the Friends of Library?
No, this is for the Woodbridge Library, and it's operated by the Library Commission.
And they have sixty thousand dollars in receipts?
Yes.
Okay. So now I have a question on the Board of Finance Recommendations. Is that part of this budget?
The Board of Finance proposed, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Page one thirty-nine.
What page?
One thirty-nine. Isn't that part of this budget?
Yes, that is a capital one of it. So these are capital projects that the, uh, town funds annually for a period of time.
Alright, so my question was on the... So my question was on the budget. On the sidewalks. For the 300, I can't find which page it is on.
So, uh, just a little bit about the schedule to help, to help, uh, understand. The capital budget contains items that are saved through tax dollars, which are the bolded items. And then it contains items that are not bolded, that are proposed items for borrowing.
Alright.
So those proposed items are not yet before the town, they're just part of the capital plan. So that, um, those that are, um, interested in the town's plan for the next five or six years knows sort of what, sort of projects they have, um, are thinking of, pursuing.
Perfect, so those are all my questions. So I guess my final question is, I'm trying to find the page. I didn't mark it, but it was for the, um...
For years 2022.
It was, this is how we find it. It was about the tax collection. And it looked like they had a negative 9 million, and this year they rejected negative 5 million in uncollected tax revenue?
So, uh, on page 133, when we calculate the mill rate, we have to come up with an estimate for uncollected taxes. So that's the estimate for uncollected taxes for that particular year. It was increased a little into 2021 because of the uncertainty of the economy at that time. And, uh, we actually, uh, did not, we did pretty well this year. So that was dropped back to our normal, uh, rate, which is about 99.5, 99.6.
So if I understand, we only need to buy 1.5 union? So if we make this, I don't know...
Doesn't that, doesn't that compare to the national average? So that's, that's, that's a, probably, if you calculate it, 230,000 dollars.
That's it?
Yep.
And is there any, is there any tax more?
We, we have probably the, I don't know, tax benefits, but probably two or three taxes big. We have very high tax collection rates.
Good. And why is it, how is the community of that being collected?
Because we have to, all the other taxpayers have to pay for the taxes that are not collected by, you know, someone doesn't pay, someone else has to. So that's why we put in the reserve for uncollected taxes.
And is that against the budget? Because it looks like it's...
It increases the mill rate a little.
Yeah, so if we can't address it?
You could, but you just, it's an estimate on, you know, what we think we would collect. Your tax collections would be short, you know it.
Is there things we could do to make sure those taxes come in?
We do, and we, we have a very high tax collection rate, um...
Not really, because I pay mine late. I'm gonna be honest. I pay my late, I forget. I'm still on the payment schedule, not on the list schedule. And it's not like I put a boot on my car, or knock on my door, or...
You were asking about the car vehicle placement, places 2016, pick a truck, or...
I'm just wondering if there's other things we could do to make it, so it's not...
$50,000, right? That's a hundred fifty dollars. Are you like...
I can't even hear what you're saying. Is this for downstairs? Is this like...
I'm just going to go to the, that's just the totality. Thank you. Thank you.
You guys, you can talk, you can do whatever you want.